Yeah, yeah. Let's sit down. We're gonna get started. Good evening, everybody. Uh, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, let's take the roll call.
Councilmember Bill Dilipina?
Present.
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Councilmember Engler?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor McCoy?
Present.
Any requests for continuance of any public hearing or agenda items? Alright, I'll move to the dais. To the podium. Some special presentations, and I'd like to invite Graham Watts to come on up. He's with the Emergency Services. He's a coordinator. If you'd join me here at the podium. Uh, for several years, the city has been in partnership with Ventura County Fire Department, and we've coordinated with the Community Emergency Response Team, CERT program. And tonight, several, several of, uh, our graduates, our CERT graduates are here with us. And Graham, you take over from here and tell everybody about this amazing program.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. As we all know, volunteers play a big part of the Thousand Oaks community. And with any major planned or unplanned event or incident, the support of residents that have a specialized talent or training is invaluable. In addition to a very successful Disaster Assistance Response Team program that's managed by the Thousand Oaks Police Department, the Ventura County Fire Department, in coordination with the city, also operates a countywide CERT program, which is, stands for Community Emergency Response Team. It's very popular and very well-attended. While the DART program provides community-wide response and support, the CERT program focuses in on individual and neighborhood-oriented specific assistance during fires, floods, and earthquakes. CERT program includes training specific to fire suppression and fire extinguisher use, basic first aid, hazardous materials awareness, emergency communications, and situational awareness. For over ten years, the city and the Fire Department have held two classes a year and now have over five hundred Thousand Oaks residents that have completed a six-week CERT class program. Doing so is a commitment of time and energy, all in the name of individual and community preparedness. This program is free to all residents eighteen years and older. To register for the 2019 classes that start in April and September, interested residents are encouraged to, uh, visit the city's website at TOAKS.org to learn more. Tonight, we are gonna recognize thirty-five, uh, residents, I'm sorry. Thirty-five residents have graduated from the 2018 program. And tonight, we have about fourteen graduates to be recognized. If I could ask them to all come up? That would be very helpful. And we have a city pin? Chief? Come on up. So, what we'll do is set it up and we'll all set it back here. Line up and we'll get you through and shake some hands. Yeah, and then we'll come up here and take a picture. So, I'll read the names of the graduates for 2018. They include Jerry Adams, Pat Adams, Davidson Adler, Richard Bavetz, Ed Briasiri, Phil Chandler, Amy Commons, Fletcher Manning, Steve Medina, Andy Moorwood, Julian Wheeler, and Will Cartlidge. Thank you all.
Am I doing okay?
I think you're doing great. You're doing great. First meeting, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Police chief for five, chief my?
Yeah, come on up. Chief, you too. I know you like to talk.
Mayor McCoy, councilmembers. Uh, for the record, John Spikerman, Division Chief for, uh, City of Thousand Oaks in Ventura County. Uh, first, I just want to thank, uh, the instructors. Uh, this program is, you know, sponsored by the Fire Department, um, but we could not do it without the instructors. Uh, they go through a lot of different training, their time commitment, uh, to do this, as well as Graham and all of his staff. They're the ones that's really kinda hold this whole program together. So, thank you guys very much for, for dedicating your time. And then, for the individuals that, uh, were graduating from this class, I got to meet you your very first day. Um, and so, I'm kinda just re-emphasize what I said then, and that is, you know, thank you for participating in this program. Um, there's only a limited amount of resources. I mean, we, we have thirty-two, thirty-three fire stations over, uh, all of Ventura County, eight hundred and fifty square acres, or, um, so if there is a natural disaster, even like our wildfire, earthquake, flood, we only have that limited amount of resources. So, we need the community to be able to get involved. And what you guys just did, the class you guys just went through, is definitely gonna help you and your immediate family. And then, we know what happens. It naturally just spills out. Once you know that you're taken care of, then you go out into your neighborhoods, and you go out and you help those that may need that help, that can't help themselves. So, you guys now have those skills and the ability to go out there and help in your neighborhood, which only helps us, so that we can focus on the other neighborhoods that don't have individuals like yourselves with those new skills. So, thank you very much. I appreciate that, uh, for you volunteering for the program, the time that you spend in it, and, uh, I hope you're able to utilize those skills, not in a natural disaster, but maybe just to help some of your neighbors. So, thank you very much. Chief Hake, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanna piggyback on that, is that people don't necessarily understand CERT completely, but for all of public safety, I have family members in San Francisco, and they're in CERT. When, when disaster strikes, we need citizens trained. And all I ask is that all of you become ambassadors and tell your neighbors and tell your families, tell them what you learned, because we need more people. We need more people trained. So, thank you very much.
If I could, uh, get the other councilmembers to come on up to the front here, and we want to get a picture with you all, because we're so grateful for what you do. So, if you guys would all gather over here, we'll take a picture with you.
Come on up. Oh, yeah. Come on, thanks. Come on.
Yes, please, give him. And, more. Look this way. More. Thank you.
Mary, I'm gonna do an audible here. I'm gonna put you third. We have, uh, two more special presentations. Right now, I'd like to invite Anoop Ramal from Himalaya, Wellness Coach Kelly Bonanno, and Ed and Denise Bennick from Rustic Wood Accents to join me up here, if you would. Uh, tonight, we're very pleased to recognize these three businesses that have completed the county's Green Business Certification Program. And Spencer Silverstein, are you here? There you are. Uh, he's from our Public Works Department, and he'll explain the importance of this program, uh, and these three environmentally conscious local businesses. So, come on up, Spencer.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. Councilmembers. The Ventura County Green Business Certification Program recognizes and rewards small and medium-sized businesses throughout the county that demonstrate a purposeful commitment to environmental stewardship through solid waste reduction and recycling, energy and water conservation, and pollution prevention. The City of Thousand Oaks is part of this program. Green business certification is one of the best ways to lower costs, generate growth, increase employee engagement, and provide a competitive edge within the eco-conscious Thousand Oaks community and broader marketplace. The following three businesses have met the criteria required to achieve certified status. Himalaya is a full-service restaurant who is no stranger to the green business program. Their Ventura location is a certified green business, and their T.O. location was certified in August of this year.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, let's take the roll call.
Councilmember Bill De La Penya.
Present.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember Engler.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Mayor McCoy.
Present.
Any requests for continuance of any public hearing or agenda items? All right, I'll move to the dais. Some special presentations, and I'd like to invite Graham Watts to come on up. He's with the Emergency Services, he's a coordinator. If you'd join me here at the podium. For several years, the city has been in partnership with Ventura County Fire Department, and we've coordinated with the Community Emergency Response Team, CERT program. And tonight, several of our graduates, our CERT graduates are here with us. And Graham, you take over from here and tell everybody about this amazing program.
Very good, thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. As we all know, volunteers play a big part of the Thousand Oaks community, and with any major planned or unplanned event or incident, the support of residents that have a specialized talent or training is invaluable. In addition to a very successful Disaster Assistance Response Team program that's managed by the Thousand Oaks Police Department, the Ventura County Fire Department, in coordination with the city, also operates a countywide CERT program, which stands for Community Emergency Response Team. It's very popular and very well-attended. While the DART program provides community-wide response and support, the CERT program focuses in on individual and neighborhood-oriented specific assistance during fires, floods, and earthquakes. CERT program includes training specific to fire suppression and fire extinguisher use, basic first aid, hazardous materials awareness, emergency communications, and situational awareness. For over 10 years, the city and the Fire Department have held two classes a year and now have over 500 Thousand Oaks residents that have completed a six-week CERT class program. Doing so is a commitment of time and energy, all in the name of individual and community preparedness. This program is free to all residents 18 years and older. To register for the 2019 classes that start in April and September, interested residents are encouraged to visit the city's website at TOAKS.org to learn more. Tonight, we are going to recognize 35 residents, I'm sorry, 35 residents have graduated from the 2018 program. And tonight, we have about 14 graduates to be recognized. If I could ask them to all come up, that would be very helpful. And we have a city pin. All right. Chief? Come on up. So what we'll do is set it up and we'll all set it back here. Line up and we'll get you through and shake some hands. Yeah, and then we'll come up here and take a picture. So I'll read the names of the graduates for 2018. They include Jerry Adams, Pat Adams, Davidson Adler, Richard Bavetz, Ed Briasiri, Phil Chandler, Amy Commons, Fletcher Manning, Steve Medina, Andy Morewood, Julian Wheeler, and Will Cartlidge. Thank you all.
Am I doing okay?
I think you're doing great. You're doing great, first meeting, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe the police chief for five, Chief Mike.
Yeah, come on up. Chief, you too. I know you like to talk.
John, no, no, get up there, get up there.
Mayor McCoy, councilmembers. For the record, John Spikerman, Division Chief for City of Thousand Oaks and Ventura County. First, I just want to thank the instructors. This program is sponsored by the Fire Department, but we could not do it without the instructors. They go through a lot of different training, their time commitment to do this, as well as Graham and all of his staff. They're the ones that really kind of hold this whole program together. So thank you guys very much for dedicating your time. And then, for the individuals that were graduating from this class, I got to meet you your very first day. And so I kind of just reemphasized what I said then, and that is, you know, thank you for participating in this program. There's only a limited amount of resources. I mean, we have 32, 33 fire stations over all of Ventura County, 850 square acres. So if there is a natural disaster, even like our wildfire, earthquake, flood, we only have that limited amount of resources. So we need the community to be able to get involved. And what you guys just did, the class you guys just went through, is definitely going to help you and your immediate family. And then, we know what happens, it naturally just spills out. Once you know that you're taken care of, then you go out into your neighborhoods, and you go out and you help those that may need that help that can't help themselves. So you guys now have those skills and the ability to go out there and help in your neighborhood, which only helps us, so that we can focus on the other neighborhoods that don't have individuals like yourselves with those new skills. So thank you very much, I appreciate that, for you volunteering for the program, the time that you spend in it. And I hope you're able to utilize those skills, not in a natural disaster, but maybe just to help some of your neighbors. So thank you very much.
Chief Hake, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to piggyback on that, is that people don't necessarily understand CERT completely, but for all of public safety, I have family members in San Francisco and they're in CERT. When disaster strikes, we need citizens trained. And all I ask is that all of you become ambassadors and tell your neighbors and tell your families, tell them what you learned, because we need more people, we need more people trained. So thank you very much.
If I could get the other councilmembers to come on up to the front here, and we want to get a picture with you all, because we're so grateful for what you do. So if you guys would all gather over here, we'll take a picture with you. Barry, I'm going to do an audible here, I'm going to put you third. We have two more special presentations. Right now, I'd like to invite Anoop Ramal from Himalaya, Wellness Coach Kelly Bonanno, and Ed and Denise Bennick from Rustic Wood Accents to join me up here, if you would. Tonight, we're very pleased to recognize these three businesses that have completed the county's Green Business Certification Program. And Spencer Silverstein, are you here? There you are. He's from our Public Works Department, and he'll explain the importance of this program and these three environmentally conscious local businesses. So come on up, Spencer.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy, councilmembers. The Ventura County Green Business Certification Program recognizes and rewards small and medium-sized businesses throughout the county that demonstrate a purposeful commitment to environmental stewardship through solid waste reduction and recycling, energy and water conservation, and pollution prevention. The City of Thousand Oaks is part of this program. Green Business Certification is one of the best ways to lower costs, generate growth, increase employee engagement, and provide a competitive edge within the eco-conscious Thousand Oaks community and broader marketplace. The following three businesses have met the criteria required to achieve certified status. Himalaya is a full-service restaurant who is no stranger to the Green Business Program. Their Ventura location is a certified green business, and their T.O. location was certified in August of this year. Himalaya routinely practices the Reduce, Reuse, and Recycle mantra. They only offer utensils with to-go orders upon request, eliminated plastic bags and polystyrene containers, and even provide reusable bags for larger orders. They are working with their landlord and waste management to begin food waste recycling, and their owner fully subsidizes his employees' housing and provides complimentary van pool to help his employees commute to work. Kelly Bonanno is a lifestyle coach specializing in equal-friendly living, organic beauty, and wellness. Her home-based business was certified in October of this year. Kelly switched the lamps and recessed lighting in her home to LED bulbs, purchases recycled content office paper, uses 100% recycled content bath tissue, and registered to delete wasteful junk email. Rustic Wood Accents is a small, family business with a passion for creating custom wood products. Certified in November of this year, their rustic mantles are uniquely handcrafted originals that feature the character specific to each antique timber. They use low-toxicity cleaning supplies and products. LED lighting is present throughout their office, showrooms, and workshop. They reuse their packaging material whenever possible, such as shipping samples to customers. They make their scrap wood available for the public to come and take for free, rather than sending it to a landfill. And for every product sold, Rustic Wood Accents donates to one tree planted in order to plant a tree on behalf of the customer. Please join me in congratulating these three businesses for going above and beyond in their sustainable business practices.
We're going to do some City Council calisthenics. Come on up again, they want to get a picture with all of you, so let's go. Come on, you guys. Next, we welcome our Cultural Affairs Director Barry McCombe to discuss the upcoming benefits events taking place at the Fred Cavali Theater. Barry, take it over.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I think it goes without saying that our city has experienced a number of terrible tragedies over the last month, but these tragedies have also proven what a tight-knit community Thousand Oaks really is. The entire community has stepped forward to support the families of the borderline victims, as well as those impacted by both the Hill and Wosley fires. Just this past weekend, there was a 5K race that brought out both runners and non-runners alike together to raise monies for the victim support funds that have been established. I'm happy to say that the local arts community has also stepped up. Within hours of the shooting tragedy, I was already being contacted by many performers in the community who called the Cunejo Valley home and who wanted to offer their talents to help raise money for those impacted. Ultimately, as a city, we received so many offers that we had to focus our efforts on a smaller number of benefit concerts here at the Civic Arts Plaza that had the greatest potential to raise large sums of money to support those impacted by these events. So tonight, I'd like to take an opportunity to make the community aware of several of these upcoming benefit concerts that will take place in the Cavali Theater. Before I announce the concerts, I would like to say that their concerts are being supported by the City of Thousand Oaks and the Thousand Oaks Alliance for the Arts. And the funds raised will be deposited into restricted accounts with the Entertainment Industry Foundation and the Ventura County Community Foundation to provide financial assistance to those impacted by the events. So, the first event will actually take place this Saturday, and features comedians Howie Mandel and Jeff Dunham. Of course, Howie Mandel is a host of America's Got Talent, and also has just come back with his Deal or No Deal television show. Jeff Dunham actually plays large arenas around the country, so having him perform in an 1,800-seat venue is very unique. Together, they also anticipate having surprise special guests that will be brought out during the evening. The concert again is on Saturday, December 22, 8:00 p.m. in the Cavali. There are a few tickets that just became available today. So if you don't have your tickets yet, there's still a chance to get them, but the show is very close to selling out. Our next event, you may have read about in the paper, is with REO Speedwagon. They are actually going to do two nights of concerts, on Saturday, January 12 at 8:00 p.m., and Sunday, January 13 at 7:00 p.m. And they've arranged for a number of special guests. Right now, they've announced Richard Marx, Five for Fighting, and Eddie Money. They do anticipate adding additional artists to the concerts. I need to say that not all special guests will appear at both concerts, so you never know who will be on stage at the evening that you attend. One of the unique things that they've done is they have allocated a large number of tickets to go to the families of the victims of the borderline incident, as well as to help bring many of our first responders who served on the front lines. The cost of those tickets, I'm actually very pleased to announce tonight that Janet and Ray Shearer, whose name is on this venue when it serves as a theater, have donated $50,000 to underwrite the cost of those tickets. That money far exceeds the cost of the tickets, so it will also be going into the victims' funds to help fend those needs. Tomorrow, I actually have the privilege of spending the afternoon with Kevin Cronin from REO Speedwagon, and John Adrasik from Five for Fighting. We'll be traveling around the community, starting with the sheriff's station, and then visiting a number of fire stations where John and Kevin will be giving out tickets to the firefighters and the sheriff's officers.
Were you going to come by the mayor's house, too?
So, in addition to these concerts, there are two more that are scheduled at this time that we're not ready to announce. I anticipate announcing those concerts right after the first year in early January. One will be country-themed, and the other will be pop music-themed. And I can tell you that they both will have A-level artists donating their time to perform here. So I encourage you to stay tuned to the City Council meetings in early January. Also, visit the Civic Arts Plaza's website, which is where we'll announce them when the time comes. And I just couldn't be more proud of our local artist community for the way that they've stepped up. And while I won't tell you how much money has been raised, we'll let that happen on the dates of the concerts, but I can tell you when these shows are done, it will easily be hundreds of thousands of dollars that will go into these funds. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barry. What a wonderful blessing. Well, now it's time for public comments. Madam Clerk, if you'd take over from here.
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for City Council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. One individual has presented a card pursuant to council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
And that one speaker is Doug Nichols. Come on down. Congratulations on your election. Oh. There you go. Do it again.
Just wanted to welcome you to your first official full evening at the helm of the City Council. Congratulations on your ascent to this role. It's obvious that you're very nervous and unfamiliar with what to do. It just seems like-
What makes you think I'm nervous?
It just flows. So congratulations, thank you. Also wanted to welcome our new City Council members, Bob Engler and Ed Jones. Welcome aboard, thank you for your time and willingness to serve. And I wanted to, actually, main purpose here was just to thank Al Adam publicly for the opportunity to serve in the Planning Commission for the last six years. I had never met Al before I had actually applied for the position, and after a couple of meetings together, he decided to give me a shot. And I very much appreciate that, I thoroughly enjoyed it. It was a tough decision to bypass that opportunity to serve the community. Look forward to continuing out to working with the City Council as a member of the Park Board, including Claudia with the COSCA Board as well, and whoever that number-two person is going to end up being. Look forward to that. And with that in mind, I just want to encourage Councilmember Jones and Engler, as you now get the opportunity to choose an upcoming planning commissioner, there are going to be many applicants. I know there's sometimes a tendency to pick someone that you know and can rely on. But I had that conversation with Al Adam, is he was saying, you know, I don't know you, I know others, and I kind of know where they're coming from. And so I just want to encourage you to keep an open mind as you go through those applications. We've had some very good discussions at the planning commission level with various members over the years, my years, and I know others in the council can say that. I know Councilmember Adam and Councilmember Bill De La Penya have also been in the commission. It's a very engaging group, so I just would encourage you to keep your mind open when you do go through those applications, some that you may not even recognize. But as we've seen over the last five weeks in particular, we have a very passionate community. They want to give, they want to contribute, and this is another opportunity to service. And so I would just, again, encourage you to keep your mind open as you review those applications. And congratulations again, I look forward to working with you over the next four years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. We have a last-minute addition for public comments, we have Janet Young. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor McCoy and members of the City Council. My name's Janet Young, I'm the Director of Development at Senior Concerns and a resident of Thousand Oaks for a long, long time. Tonight, you will be considering the recommendations from the Community Funding Review Committee for grant applications for community enhancement grants. I hope you will agree with the committee's recommendation that Senior Concerns be awarded a grant of $5,000 to enable us to create a drought-tolerant garden fronting Hodencamp Road by Senior Concerns. Our aim with the drought-tolerant garden is to help beautify this area of Hodencamp Road, reduce our overall water usage by converting this garden area to drought-tolerant, and to provide a showcase to the community so that they, too, can learn how to create drought-tolerant garden areas. In addition, through the installation of a new flagpole and American flag and uplighting in the garden area, we aim to help honor those who serve our country. Thank you so much for your own service to our community and for your consideration of our grant request tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there anything you want to follow up on? Okay. Well, thank you to our speakers. We're going to go with the consent calendar now. Ask the council if there are any questions in regards to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'd like to pull item 7G, if we may, please.
7G. Okay. Do we have a motion now with, yes, go ahead, Al.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar.
All right. Madam Clerk, will you set up the vote? Go ahead and vote.
The motion carries 5-0, and I do have two ordinance titles to read into the record. Ordinance amending Section 6-1.100, 6-1.106, 6-1.107, 6-1.109, and repealing in its entirety Section 6-1.05 of the Municipal Code of the City of Thousand Oaks regarding the adoption of Title 10 of the Los Angeles County Code with associated local amendments as it relates to animal regulations, MCA 2018-70107, ordinance number 1658-N.S. And one final ordinance, ordinance amending Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, Section 6-5.102, 6-5.105, and 6-5.106 of Title 6, Chapter 5, Smoking to Include Electronic Smoking Devices, ordinance number 1659-N.S.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Jones, you had questions on item 7G, go ahead.
Yes, I don't find any problem with it, but I'd like to understand it a little bit better. I pulled it just because it's typical of some of the other items. I just would be interested in knowing a little bit more about the procedures for the selection of this company. And in reading the staff report, I didn't see that there were bids from the other four parties. Maybe I missed it, but I'm wondering, do we take the lowest responsible bid? And if so, what were the other bids, or did I miss them?
Ms. Hardy, you want to cover that, or?
It's actually Jamie Boscarin, our Finance Director, will address.
Thank you. On page 2 of 3 of the report, in the discussion and analysis, it lists the five responses that we received, the five companies. This is a request for a proposal, not a bid. So we are not required to take the lowest price, the lowest bidder. We have to factor in a variety of different things, such as the quality of services that will be received, and the reference checks that we do. And some of the responses, the proposals that we received, did not cover the full scope of what we were asking for. So one of them would only have covered our boiler systems, not the entire scope of the different mechanical systems that we would like to have the maintenance for. So in taking in all the different factors, that's how the committee with members from Finance and Public Works Department came up with the Siemens as our recommendation.
Could you tell me what are some of the other criteria that you use in determining? And why don't we go with the lowest responsible bid? Is it because it's, as you pointed out, it's lacking in certain areas?
I can probably answer that question, Commissioner Jones. When you have certain procedures, you have professional services, and then you have public contracts. This is a professional services agreement. So when we're considering professional services, while the amount of the bid is one of the factors that's taken into consideration, for professional services, we also look at other extraneous things, such as their experience, quality of past work, references, et cetera. If it was a public contract, like for instance, slurry sealing the streets or something like that, we are required to go with the lowest competitive bidder pursuant to state law. But for professional services, most cities do not automatically go with the lowest bidder.
Well, I don't mean to be, you know, a picker of knit here, but is there some reason you don't include the other amounts of the other bids?
Again, we look at the factors, a variety of factors, and it's not just the cost that's been being proposed by the proposers.
Okay, that doesn't exactly answer my question of why you don't show the other numbers, but we'll let it go at that. I have no problem with the item, I just wanted to know the procedure for arriving at it. Thank you.
Councilmember Jones, you can discuss this further after this. If you want to make a motion to approve G, we can-
Sure, I'll make that motion.
All right. Madam Clerk, will you bring the vote?
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We have no public hearings, now we're going to item number nine. Dr. Helen Cox, our Sustainability Division Manager, will be sharing with us in regards to a department report, fire debris removal, and also to answer questions, we have Chris Finley, our Deputy Public Works Director. So Dr. Cox, take over.
Thank you. We'll also be joined on the podium this evening by Farlevers, who's our City Fire Recovery Concierge, and she'll be here to answer questions also.
It wasn't on my cheat sheet, so that's why I didn't say anybody's name, I'm sorry.
Right, that's why I added it, and that's why we just bumped Jamie off here. Good evening, Mayor McCoy and members of the council. I'm here to present tonight on property owner options for fire debris removal and cleanup from destroyed and fire-damaged properties. As you know, the city experienced two large fires that broke out on November 8. This photo was taken at 2:30 in the morning. This photo was taken at 2:30 in the morning, heading towards evacuation center on November the 9th. This data is provided from the CAL FIRE report on the losses to date from those two fires. In the City of Thousand Oaks, we lost 38 properties. They were deemed uninhabitable, plus an additional 22-plus damaged properties. The damaged properties are still being amended as we get additional reports coming in. So there are two steps in the fire debris removal process. The first phase, which is the removal of household hazardous waste, such as household chemicals, paint, gasoline, the kinds of things listed here, is carried out first. And then there's a second phase in which the actual building materials and the debris that was a result of the fire is removed. The Phase 1 cleanup is mandatory. People do not apply for it. That's carried out by either the California Department of Toxic Substances Control or the Federal Environmental Protection Agency. They began this program on December the 3rd, and we've been told that Thousand Oaks has been cleared, though they haven't yet come through and done... There's a couple of commercial properties, and we're also following up on a couple of properties that we don't think that they had access to. Homeowners will know when their property has been cleared because it'll be tagged, as shown here, with one of these yellow marking signs that's attached to the property itself. There's also a regularly updated map that's available through the Ventura County Recovers website that is publicly accessible, and people can locate their own property there and see what the status is as to whether their property has been cleared. So we're about to embark on the second phase of debris and ash removal, and there are two options here for property owners. There's the state program, that's also, that's being run under the California Office of Emergency Services, and carried out by CAL Recycle. And there's a local city program, which is what we're here tonight to consider passing an ordinance to put that in place. If you have a partially damaged structure, the state program will not cover those structures, and so you're obligated to go through a local program unless you're exempted, and I will cover those conditions for exemption. So we had a kickoff community meeting for the state program last week, last Monday, December 10th, which was held here at City Hall in the Founder's Room. We contacted as many of the property owners of the completely destroyed properties as we could get hold of. Approximately 100 people attended. In fact, the room was filled to capacity. At that meeting, FEMA was present, CAL Recycle was present, county staff and city staff were present and presented on that program, presented information on what it entailed, how to apply, what conditions needed to be met. Basically, this program covers residential properties only, not commercial properties, and it only covers fully destroyed properties. The advantage is that the homeowner does need to do very little. They only need to apply for the property through completing a right-of-entry form. And they need to turn over the insurance, the debris removal part of their insurance, homeowner insurance policy, not the whole insurance policy, but just the part that's been set aside specifically for debris removal. So if they agree to those conditions, then they can apply for the state program. They won't actually know whether the program, whether their property has been accepted until the state personnel are out and actually do a site visit on that property site and evaluate that, and that will happen in January. So we're encouraging people to take part in that because there's no out-of-pocket expense to the homeowners, and it's a sort of all-in-one program where the state will take care of everything that needs to be done to remove the debris in a safe manner and clean up the site. We also opened an intake center here at City Hall last Tuesday. It's been open for a week. So far, this is 13. I think as of the end of today, we had 15 applications from city residents for that program. That center will be open throughout the week, and if we believe that there is a need to continue that in the new year, we will reopen again in the new year. Otherwise, the program is being administered through the county, and residents are able to apply at the county offices in Ventura. As I mentioned, the other option for debris removal to our homeowners is to go through a local program, and that's what the ordinance would put in place. We would like to roll that out this week, before the end of the week. This would cover both properties that are ineligible for the CAL Recycle program, for the state's program. But it also covers homeowners that elect not to go through the state's program for one reason or another, and it would also cover commercial properties that are ineligible for the state's program. In this case, if they apply for the local program, the conditions that are applied for the cleanup are exactly the same as what the state's program requires. So there's the same removal of foundation, there's the same soil testing, soil removal, air quality monitoring. All of those conditions are identical to those that are put in place by the state. And some of those are listed here. One of the conditions for all of the debris removal is that it has to be wrapped so that when it's in transport, none of the ash and debris can be released into the atmosphere or the environment. There's also asbestos testing required, and they will need to have certified contractors that can handle asbestos. The other homeowners who need to go through the local program would be those who only have partially burned properties because they're not covered under the state's property. So our local program would have a partial burn application. In this case, anything that was... It could be uninhabitable, or it could actually be habitable, but only part of the structure is burnt, and in general, it means that the foundation would not have to be removed, so the conditions are somewhat different. In these kinds of properties, generally, there is no soil testing or soil remediation that's necessary. So that's a separate part of the local program. One note, we've had several calls about vehicles, so private vehicles that are destroyed in the fire. If the owner takes part in the state program, then the CAL Recycle staff will remove these vehicles altogether and remove any debris that's associated with them, and that's if the vehicle is present on the property itself, in the garage, or driveway, or located on the site. For those who are not enrolled in the state program, then the owners need to remove their burned vehicles themselves, generally through their auto insurance would normally take care of that, and the insurance company would normally provide the authorized hauler and the licensed dismantler where that vehicle would be taken. We do have forms available online. We have a website that's available directly from the city's main homepage, which will take them to a site for fire-impacted homes, in which we are publishing all of these documents available to the homeowners. There are exemptions for minor burns, and this applies to any landscaping damage, trees, fences, outside structures that are less than 100 square feet. So for example, gazebos, sheds, decks, maybe patios. In order to qualify for the exemption, the structure also has to have no asbestos associated with it. In this case, the homeowner does... We have posted conditions online that the homeowner has to abide by, but there are no forms to complete and no applications to turn into the city. So this is one case where I believe Councilmember Bill De La Pena expressed an interest in us working with Rubicon at the last council meeting. We have tried to contact them. That's a volunteer organization that works with veterans, and they do participate in debris removal programs. We have reached out to them several times. We have yet to receive a response from them. But if they were interested in doing cleanup, this is the kind of cleanup that they could do because it doesn't require any specialized permit. So once debris is removed, the next... Well, this is all part of the recovery process. Just wanted to let you know that the city has brought, has appointed Farlevers, the second on my left here, to be our Fire Recovery Concierge, and she is providing personal assistance one-on-one to each of the property owners that have been affected by the fires. So she has emailed, phoned each one of them. She's their personal liaison for helping them through the whole process, including the debris and then in the rebuilding process also. City staff are also involved in assisting with the state program, both through assisting at our intake center, and also we will be staffing the state's, what they call their DROC, Disaster Recovery Operations Center, which will be a field operations center once their staff comes out in January to do the removal. We'll also be running the local program, so that's the one I just described, that we're looking at the ordinance tonight. And the staff in our Community Development Department are working on the Streamline Permitting and Rebuilding Package. We don't have the details of that yet, but I'm sure you will hear about it very soon. So thank you. The recommendations are in the staff report, and we're here to answer your questions. As I mentioned, I have Cliff Finley, our City Engineer, Farlevers, our Recovery Concierge. And let us know if we can help answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Council, you have any questions?
Yes, I have a question for our concierge, which I think is just really neat that we have that. And what are the hours that our concierge is available to the victims?
Good evening. I've made phone calls at 7:00 PM at night. I've been working Saturdays. At least as far as getting first contact, I've been available above and beyond the hours because I want to make sure we take care of our residents. In the future, I mean, 7:30 to 5:30 is the regular hours, but if somebody really needs me, I've got my phone with me at home, so.
That is fantastic. I wanted to share with staff and council an email that I received from a local attorney who works with municipalities. And this particular person was comparing notes with other employees in other cities that have dealt with fires, Napa Fires, Paradise, and so forth. And of course, we all know our city is not perfect. No city is perfect. But all things considered, they have concluded that Thousand Oaks has done a darn fine job overall, and that we are all to be congratulated for the work that you have done. So thank you.
Here you go.
And I think that is a fine example.
Thank you. Councilmember Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. So Phase 1 for the removal of the toxic substances is just about completed, then?
We've been informed by EPA that they have completed that phase. We're sort of double-checking ourselves to make sure that we don't have any homeowners that are unsure about that. The only property that I know of, they have not covered the commercial properties, is one property in Newbury Park that hasn't been covered.
Okay. Yeah, that seems to me that was done quite quickly. And so now we enter Phase 2, where we start to remove the debris, and the state offers a free program to fully destroyed homes to remove that debris. The only thing is, they'd have to come up with... If they have insurance, they'd have to dedicate those payments to the removal of the debris. Is that correct?
Yes. They can still be part of the program if they don't have any insurance. It's just that if they do have insurance, the state will take as partial payment that part of the insurance that's set aside for debris removal. If that part of the insurance exceeds the actual costs, then the state will not charge the full amount. They'll just charge it up to the limit of that.
Okay. So for fully destroyed homes, then it would seem to me that the state option would be superior to our local program, would it not?
That would seem to be the case. There are reasons, isolated reasons, that some homeowners may prefer not to use it. For example, if they want work done beyond just the removal of the burnt structures. So if they want to rebuild a completely different property on the site, and they want other things removed that are not fire-damaged, that might be a reason that they would choose not to go with the state. But in general, the state's program would be the simpler and easier option.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of getting at. What would be the circumstances whereby you'd go with the local program? But that sounds like that would be in the minority, and that we definitely prefer and encourage people to go with the state program.
Yes, indeed, that's the case. That's what we're trying to do.
All right. Thank you for the report.
Thank you, Councilmember Adam. Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, just a quick question. Do we have adequate staff if a lot of people choose the local program?
Yes, good evening. We will put forth the resources required to take care of the local, our local residents. This is a relatively short period of time. We expect this removal to take anywhere from three to six months, so we'll allocate the required resources. It may mean some other things slip a little bit on schedules, but we'll make it happen.
What is it they have to do by March 15th?
By March 15th, they need to sign up, sign up for a program... Actually, everything's supposed to be cleaned up by March 15th.
Okay. It seems to me that the staff is going to have a delicate job, if I understand it correctly, because you're dealing with people whose, you know, lives have been really harmed by this, and it seems to me you're going to have to be rather diplomatic if you're... I'm not giving advice to anybody. I'm just saying. I don't know if I'd want that job or not, but I'm sure they can handle it. Thank you.
Councilmember Engler?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. I know that we've got roughly 60 or so damaged and destroyed structures, but we only have about 15 people who have applied so far for remediation?
We have 37 fully destroyed structures, so they're the only ones that would be eligible for the state's program, so 15 out of the 37 have applied so far, and that's just in one week. So, yeah, that's where we are right now.
I know typically after a disaster, and I agree with Councilmember Jones, that people tend to be a little bit in shock and are a little slow to start moving and move toward recovery. Are you doing any outreach for the people who you haven't reached yet?
Yes, I've been calling all 37 people. I've got a tab on everybody who's going to be working through the program. Some people haven't had a chance to come into the intake center, which I'm actually running with the county myself, so I'm encouraging people to come in to utilize the program, and I'm just fairly certain they haven't had a chance to make it in quite yet, but I'll keep making phone calls. Don't worry.
Thank you. Yeah, with the holidays, people will be a little delayed, I think. So thank you for doing that. That's awesome.
No problem.
Any other questions? Council discussion, maybe a motion? Councilmember Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move 9A, Creation of a Local City Program to deal with the debris.
Before we vote on that, Councilmember Bill De La Pena, you got a question?
No, that was actually my request to make a motion, but that's okay.
You got beat to it. Madam Clerk, will you prepare the vote?
The motion carries 5-0, and I have an ordinance title to read into the record. It's an urgency ordinance establishing local standards and procedures for cleanup of debris generated by the Hill and Woolsey Fires, establishing enforcement standards and authorizing abatement of public nuisances following issue of an inspection and abatement warrant, ordinance number 1660 NS.
All right. Thank you so much for all you do. Well done. We move to item 10, Committee Committee We move to item 10, Committee Commission Board Report. We have Kathleen Marley, the Chair of the Community Funding Review Committee. And take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I have funding recommendations for two grants to present this evening. First, the Community Funding Review Committee met in October, at which time we reviewed 12 community enhancement grant applications. One application was incomplete, so we removed it from consideration. So as a result, we're recommending that the City Council approve the funding of 11 applications for a total of $45,000. Second, the Community Funding Review Committee met in November, at which time we reviewed nine sports facility endowment grant applications. Likewise, one application was incomplete, so we removed it from consideration. As such, we're recommending that City Council approve the funding of eight applications for a total of $55,959. I understand that you have the detailed reports, but if you have any questions about either of these recommendations, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Council, you have any questions? Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. Good evening. I have a question regarding the applications. And I see for what they're being used, the grants, proposed grants. And I'm wondering whether any of these were impacted by any of the Hill Fire or the Woolsey Fire?
Unfortunately, I do not know specifically as we met on each of these prior to the fires. The second meeting was a week prior. I've not heard that we've had any. Let me see if anybody has heard.
Schumash, right? Mm-hmm. So the Schumash was impacted by this, correct?
They did email us to let us know that they did have some type of damage, but I told them that they would need to adhere to what was in their project and have the funds go towards the project and not go towards any fire-related damage that they had. But they, I didn't hear from any other of the groups.
Do they know that they can apply for funding for aid through VCCF?
I didn't mention that, but I can write back to them and tell them that. If they haven't done, I'll find out if they've done that or not.
Okay, thank you.
You're with the Schumash organization? After our session, we'll, we'll have you get together and answer those questions to get you prepared for that. Council discussion, or you have more you wanted to share? Were there any more? Oh, wait, we have another speaker. Councilmember Jones, forgive me.
I just wondered who the woman was that just spoke to us. Or who she is.
I'm Vanessa Pellegrino, Assistant Analyst in the Public Works Department, the Sustainability Division.
Thank you very much.
From the Pellegrino Water Family.
I'm trying to get to know people here.
All right. Are there any more speakers? No, we have no public comments. So council discussion, motion? Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
And move Staff Recommendation 1 and 2?
All right, wait a minute. We got Councilmember Adam and Angler. Were you guys trying to get a motion in?
No, I, the motion is fine. I just wanted to speak to it real briefly. For the benefit of the viewing public, the city has a long history of contributions to different entities. To give you an idea, the enhancement grants, that's $800,000 since 1998. And the sports grants, that's another $1,004,000. So that's $2.25 million the city has contributed to. Organizations like Manna and Cano Valley Unified School District. We helped to build the Westlake High School Football Stadium, Thousand Oaks High School Swimming Pool, the soccer fields. The list goes on and on. So I'm very happy that the city's able to step up because this is vital for the health and the well-being of the city of Thousand Oaks. And I will support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adam. Councilmember Angler, you know a lot about Manna, and you're going to add something, I imagine?
Yes, I do know quite a bit, a bit about Manna. And because of my, my recent involvement with Manna, I'm going to abstain from this vote. However, I agree 100% with Councilman Adam that these grants are very important to our local nonprofits, and they take it and multiply that money and do a lot of good in the community.
Would you, for just the listening audience, share why you're going to recuse yourself? What includes that? Just share with everybody.
I have a multi-year relationship with Manna. I'm just recently retired as a member of the board and board president of Manna. So I wanted to abstain in this vote.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you prepare the vote?
The motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember Angler abstaining.
All right, we have nothing on item 11. What, what's that? Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. 10B. We have the City Investment Review Committee Annual Report, and that's going to be Jamie Bascarino, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy, council members. I would like to invite--
Oh, wait, 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 wait. New Finance Director. Congratulations. Welcome on board.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Bill Burrleiner down, and he will be giving the presentation tonight on behalf of the Investment Review Committee. Unfortunately, John Short, our Chair, was unable to attend at the last minute, so Bill graciously decided to step up and volunteer to make the presentation tonight.
Great, thank you. For those who aren't familiar with it, the committee was formed in 1997 and is comprised of five members of the community with significant expertise and experience in finance and investments. In addition to me, the members of the committee are John Short, the Chairman, Jim Hoagland, who is in attendance tonight, Mark Cronky, and Richard Law. The committee was established to monitor the treasurer's compliance with the investment policy and to report to the City Council on a quarterly and annual basis. The committee also recommends changes to the investment policy as appropriate. We presented the last report to City Council in November, on November 28th of 2017. The committee met its schedule, on schedule four times over the course of the last year. Just speaking to the markets in general, since the last annual report, the Federal Reserve has raised interest rates four times, from a range of 1 to 1.25% to the current range of 2 to 2.25%. And in fact, the Federal Reserve met, began a two-day meeting today, and will be announcing its results tomorrow. And it's widely expected that they'll raise their rates another quarter of a percent, 25 basis points, although it's believed, it's widely believed, although not guaranteed by any means, that they will pause after that to see what effects it has on the economy and on the financial markets. The portfolio yield increased this year by 41 basis points, in part due to the overall rise in market interest rates, from 1.43% to 1.84%, providing approximately $1 million additional dollars in investment revenue to the city. The portfolio balance has increased over the past few years, and the reserves are now being spent on projects such as the Payment Overlay Project and funding the Pension Trust Our committee's quarterly reviews of the portfolios show that the investments are a diversified pool of low-risk investments that are in compliance with the city's policies. The committee submitted a report of its findings to the City Council after each meeting, and agendas and summary notes were also provided to council members at that point. We, as a committee, continue to evaluate the portfolio composition, specifically the amounts invested in the various government-sponsored enterprises that issue marketable debt. We have, we recommend, we continue to recommend that the staff attempt to evenly distribute its investments in the four primary government-sponsored enterprises, which are the Federal Home Loan Bank, the Farm Credit Bank, Fannie Mae, and Freddie Mac. The committee has continued to monitor and discuss investment strategy in a rising interest rate market while maintaining appropriate liquidity. The committee recommends the following changes to the investment policy. The pension funds would be governed by California Government Code 53215-53224. Similar to other pension funds, the, this pension fund should be exempted from the normal investment policy because the management of a pension fund is quite different in terms of outlook and objectives than the management of a liquidity portfolio and a portfolio of more liquid assets. And it's an appropriate set-aside carve-out for this particular portfolio. We've also recommended that the debt authorization, city debt authorization have a maximum amount of 5% of the city's portfolio, which is similar to other single issuer limits. And also amend the policy that the government codes authorize, which authorize a purchase of the agency's own debt, but require bond counsel approval before these types of purchases. This is our recommendation to change the investment policy to, to adjust, to meet those standards. And we also recommended some updates and pruning of the glossary to include term currently used and incorporated in the investment policy. The staff will address the committee's recommendations when the investment policy is presented to council in January. This concludes our annual report. Our recommendation is to receive and file the report. On that note, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Burrleiner. Jane, it was wonderful with you interviewing all the folks that want to be a part of this committee, and you have some remarkable folks that oversee this, and thank you for your volunteer time. Council, you have any questions in regards to this? All right, well, oh, go ahead, Al.
Thanks, Mayor. Okay. I got some observations. And as I understand it, you're all going to come back to us with a revised investment policy in January. So a couple of observations, a couple of questions. I'd like you to take these observations into account when you come up with this revised investment policy. Number one, I see that we have about 5% in treasuries. Did I get that number right? Or thereabouts. It's a relatively small percentage as compared to the agencies, federal farm credit, federal home loan, et cetera, et cetera. Considering the rise that we've had in yields, and treasuries now are 2.5%, maybe a little bit more. Do we, by the way, do we ladder the portfolio for treasuries? We do?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to think about raising that percentage up for treasuries and decreasing potentially the percentage for agencies. And I know you can't do it overnight, but they are linked to housing. We're in a nine-year expansion right now. Rates are on the rise. We don't quite know where the housing market's going to go. It just seems prudent to me to be able to get that kind of a yield from a relatively risk-free treasury bond, we ought to take, treasury note bond or bill. We ought to take advantage of that. Number two, for the benefit of the people at home, we've set aside $24 million, correct, for our pension stabilization fund? I believe that's the number, right?
Council decided on $22.5 million.
$22.5, okay.
And we're slowly over, through June of next year, are setting aside that money, yes.
And what that will do is just what it says. It will stabilize our pension situation. It's great that we're able to do that, and many communities cannot. It will also save us a ton of money in interest expense because, in a sense, we'll be refinancing our pension debt down to 15 years versus 30. And there's estimates we could save as much as $30 million over that time period. However, that $24 million will be in a separate account that we will have control of, which is good. When we talk about exempting the pension stabilization fund from the investment policy, that's fine, I get it, but I want to know, then I want to come up with a policy for investing that money.
So that we do have an existing investment guidelines document that we worked on with Highmark Capital, who is doing the investing of the funds. So that is in place currently.
All right. So we'll see that in January, correct?
We wouldn't be bringing that to City Council.
I'd like to see that. You don't have to lay out the whole, whatever, 15 pages, but just some sort of a bullet point. All right? If that's okay?
Yeah.
All right. And then finally, city debt. So I presume you're talking about municipal bonds?
Correct.
We don't have any in the portfolio at this point, do we?
We've purchased other agencies' debt, but not our own.
But we want to start buying individual municipals?
I, we don't have any plans currently to issue our own debt, and that's what this would be related to, if we issue our own debt and purchase our own debt.
Oh, okay.
So, we don't have any plans in the future, but this, it is allowed per government code, and this provides us the flexibility to do so at that point in time that we would potentially be issuing our own debt.
Okay. So it would be our own debt in the portfolio?
That's correct.
And if I'm not mistaken, we have a pretty good rating, don't we? What is our city rating? Double A?
We don't have a city rating. Our wastewater bonds, which we're actually just refunded or redeemed, were triple-A rated.
Triple-A? That's unusual for a, for a city bond. That's good. Okay. But what I'm saying is, if we decide to expand and buy other city debt, I'd like, I'd like to see some guidelines there as well. I mean, are we talking about general obligation bonds, revenue bonds, insured bonds, that kind of thing? If we plan to go beyond our own debt.
We do currently have other agency debt in our portfolio. Looking, we have $44 million in municipal bonds--
Okay.
--from other, you know, State of California, school districts, a variety of different government agencies.
Okay. So I presume we have a policy for purchase of these?
Yeah, it's part of our investment policy, yes.
Okay. Well, for my own, for my benefit, then, could you just put a little bullet point addendum in there? I'd like, I'd like to see that as well.
Sure.
Okay. I mean, the reason I'm getting at this, the city has a long history of conservative investing, and it's really paid off for us. We're managing $275 million. We've managed to avoid all, a lot of the pitfalls that other cities have fallen into, Orange County and their bankruptcy. We had a city here in Ventura County, I won't mention them, lost $10 million on a Lehman bond. There's another city that lost $20 million on some, here in Ventura County, back in the 80s, on some very unshrewd investments. So I like our conservative policy. I want to stick to it. And so that's why I brought up a couple of these things. So, thanks, Jamie.
Yes, and Councilmember, to your point regarding the purchase of Thousand Oaks City debt, the change we made to the policy was to specifically address limits to that, that purchase. That was in the policy previously, but the committee recommended that there be a limit to what could be purchased under that.
Okay, yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah, we don't want to concentrate.
Exactly.
All right, well, thank you for your work on the committee. It's a very important committee.
Yes. And on behalf of the committee, it's a privilege to, to work with the staff and to serve the people of the city.
It's important to have a citizens committee reviewing our staff, you know, maneuvers in the investment world. So, good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adam. This seems to be your wheelhouse. Thanks for sharing the story with the community. That's good. Well, if there's no more discussion, ask for a motion? Councilmember Adam?
Well, since I had the most to say about it, I'll move--
This is true.
Yes, I'll move 10B.
Madam Clerk, will you prepare the vote?
The motion carries 5-0.
Nothing for item 11. Nothing for agenda item 12. Assistant City Manager, Ingrid Hardy, would you like any follow-up on anything?
Yes, I have a couple of announcements, Mayor. The first meeting of 2019 will be held on Tuesday, January 8th, at 6:00 PM. Currently, we have two department reports on the pending agenda list. This includes an item to recommend awarding a contract for the Civic Arts Plaza Campus Master Plan, and an item to select a consultant for the general plan update. Also on the agenda, under Council Issues and Recommendations, there's an item regarding the City Council Committee assignments. Lastly, I do want to remind the public of the city closure, starting Monday, December 24th, at 1:00 PM, through Tuesday, January 1st. Normal City Hall business-- Normal City Hall business hours will resume on Wednesday, January 2nd, at 7:30 AM. For more information on the closures, such as emergency numbers, frequently asked questions, and specific hours for the theater or library, the public can go to the city's website at That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. By the way, our city manager had to postpone his vacation because of the shooting and the fires, and so now he is on vacation, and that's why he's missing the meeting. Well, on a personal note, I'd like to wish the citizens of Thousand Oaks a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and that will bring us to the adjournment. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be January 8th, as Ms. Hardy pointed out. So, have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. That concludes our meeting.